We've got 10 online.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. This is February 2025. This is the regular meeting of the Gillum County Court. Calling the meeting to order. We've established a forum and we'll now have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item of business, we will be entering into executive session. The Gillum County Court will now meet in executive session.
Okay, just a second. So they're going to have to leave the room.
The exact question is how to review. I'm going to start over. The Gillum County Court will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held to review attorney-client privileged communication. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated individuals are permitted to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to please leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations held during the executive session except to state the general subject of the executive session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. All virtual members of the audience will be asked to leave the Zoom meeting. Zoom participants may log back into the meeting and will remain in the waiting room until the court reconvenes. Any person who participates may wait in the hallway or downstairs in a conference room that's labeled DMV until the court reconvenes.
Uh, one thing.
We're getting into regular session now following a closed session. Item 3.0, additions and revisions to the agenda. Um, I just wanted to make a, a brief statement. Um, and just let the public know a financial review was recently completed. We are happy to report that there were no material findings discovered. A press release will be issued soon regarding the financial review and that should be issued within the next few weeks. I just wanted to make that statement. Are there any other revisions or additions to the agenda? Okay. That takes us to correspondence, public comment. I'm going to start with three pieces of correspondence that we received. We received a letter from Les Rourke regarding, um, executive sessions and specifically executive sessions titled records exempt from disclosure and he was encouraging the court to include the subject matter of that documents that are excluded. So that's something that we will need to discuss at the county court about whether or not we want to title future executive sessions to say which, which items are excluded from public disclosure, but we will address that um, based on Mr. Rourke's request. We have a letter from Marta Michaelow regarding a right-of-way application um, that is proposed uh, before the Gillum County Court for transmission lines and the Gillum County right-of-way. It was included in the packet. Um, you're here, I didn't know if you wanted to address your letter um, at the time you come up and speak or not. I wasn't going to read all of the letters. I'm just going to summarize.
Okay, summarize is fine.
Okay. She was um, expressing concerns about uh, the right-of-way application to be sure that it's a sound decision of the county court. And also a letter from Kimberly Davis, um, also expressing concern um, due to transmission lines and, and this person's concern of it being right in front of their house for this, this project. So those are the three pieces of correspondence. Public comment. First person on the list is Marta Michaelow. Sorry, I need to come over. Yes.
State your name and your city.
Marta Michaelow, Arlington, Oregon. Um, what I wanted to let the court know is that there's a group of folks that are coming together to work on, what are we going to do about the Rock Creek Schoolhouse? How are we going to maintain it? Do we want to maintain it? Uh, how do we make sure? It's a wonderful building, built in 1912. Uh, we do a lot of effort with it. Uh, the Davis family has been terrific uh, before that. Uh, Leo Ramsey loved it absolutely and, um, and now it's, it's been sitting and not being used very much. However, we're really concerned. We still need to maintain it if we want to maintain it and if we could get funding for it. So there's some things that are happening. Uh, Kim Davis is actively working on getting us a 501(c)(3) so that we can become a nonprofit. There's a lot of things that go with that. We have to have a board, have to have regular meetings, that sort of thing. Um, and but that is one way that we see that we can get some funding for it. We can get some historic funding perhaps for a historic building. Um, there's, it's the one way we can get some, some money essentially. Um, there has been some wind farms that have expressed interest in helping and that's really great, but until we become an actual 501(c)(3), our hands are tied. Um, however, uh, we are, we do have a meeting on March 8th. Uh, we're inviting everybody to be there. So I would like to invite the court to be there. Um, that school represents a lot of things for a lot of people. Uh, there's been a lot of weddings and showers and 4H meetings and um, it, it stopped being an active school. The last year it was an active school was 1967. So our population of school attendees are aging out. Um, I went there from my first through fifth grades myself and, um, and then moved, went into Arlington. So you know, we're, we're getting older and uh, so we really, but we want to maintain it. We need, desperately need new windows. It's like, I tell people, they go in there, don't touch the windows because they just literally just fall out. And um, we need a new septic, we need new plumbing, we need the floors redone. Uh, we do have a, a good roof, but there's just things that have to happen for that building to maintain it as a viable structure, even if nobody's using it. Um, it's, I think it's the last school and that is even there.
Do you know what year it was built?
1912, I believe. 1910 or 1912. Um, we did, it's probably been 15 years ago now. I did put in a new furnace and so that's, that's really helpful. Um, I'm personally paying the electric bill every month. Um, just because we, we want it, we want it to survive. So I am inviting everybody here, everybody here to attend. March 8th, 3 o'clock, Rock Creek Schoolhouse. Be there. Um, have opinions. We're going to have cookies and coffee and talk about how we want to help this building stay the wonderful building it is. So.
I agree. It's a building that's meant a lot to a lot of people over the years and it's iconic for our county.
It really is. It really is. And we don't have the Ole Miss Schoolhouse anymore. Um, you know, it's just, it's the only one left. And I think if you look around, a lot of these, the county, our neighboring counties, it's, it's probably the, the, one of the only schools around that's still viable.
At our town hall meeting, one of the subjects was preservation of historic buildings.
Yeah. Right. We'll talk about that next week perhaps at the Arlington Town Hall. Right. So.
So, um, don't forget to bring it up.
I, I won't. Trust me. I won't. So.
So you guys are in the process of getting the 501(c)(3).
Correct. Correct. Um, now, and the biggest issue is everything that's being done from a, from a money point of view is all donation. Everybody is donating their time. Everybody just, you know, it's like, I, I paid the electric bill. So it's just what you do. It's to, to maintain it. So we do want to come up with some ways to, because we probably will need to have an attorney help with that. Uh, what do we do to, to pay for that service of, from the attorney? So we'll, we'll need to come up with some, some fundraisers. Um, I don't really want to do a GoFundMe because they take a lot of the money and like, we don't want to, to do that, but we could do fundraisers and such, but until we, once we get the 501(c)(3), that really opens it up to other possibilities. So, yeah.
Next, then people can use it as a tax write-off.
I'm sorry?
People can use it as a tax write-off.
Exactly. Right. Exactly right. And so now it's just they're giving out of the goodness, goodness of their heart.
This isn't historic, this isn't a question for you. This is a question in my mind. Does historical society support other historic buildings that aren't, I mean, on-site? I mean, would they be?
I don't, they don't have any money either. They don't have any money to give. I don't think they work off donations and, and so.
And they're a 501(c)(3).
Are they a 501(c)(3) perk?
Yeah, we're a nonprofit and I mean, if you guys don't get to that point, just have, have conversations and we'd always be potential financial sponsors. So like to be able to apply for grants.
Right, right.
And they've applied for grants for Gillum County before.
Right. Yeah. And, and that's one of the things that we'd like to be able to do too is to, um, because we do have some, some projects that really need to happen sooner rather than later to, to support the building. So, um, anyway, so that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. So we'll see y'all there. Our change. It's Saturday.
Okay, I have another phone.
I want to make sure that, has everyone signed the, the sheet that wanted to speak? Um, today I have Shannon Koppick and Catherine Briner, the only other two on the sheet. Okay. Uh, Shannon Koppick. Oh, sorry. You want to speak? But you're, are you speaking in another way as opposed to the row committee? Okay, we got you on the agenda. Thank you. This is just public comment. I'm coming with Shannon. I'm tagging along. It's Bronn's thing.
Catherine Briner, City of Condon.
Shannon Koppick, Condon.
So I'm going to start just briefly. Is that after we came last time, I did meet with the Oregon Department of Revenue when I was in Salem a couple of weeks ago, last week. And, um, it's going to be a long drawn out process. It's from a 1974 law. I think that definitely needs to be changed. It's not going to happen in this session, so keep it on the back burner. But I think we've come to a a request of the county court for the two smaller districts. So, um, what we found out is that there is an ORS. I don't think it necessarily pertains to this situation. It might be a little different if I go on it. It's ORS 311.392.
311.392.
And what it is, is it basically allows the county court to give taxes to some of these taxing districts in advance. And so this is kind of what we're going to ask for the cemetery district and the fire district. And though I'm not a cemetery, I'm not one of their representatives. I did talk with Janet Griffith and I just said, of the taxing districts in the South County, the rural fire and the cemetery districts are two of the ones that are hurt the worst by this appeal process. And so the amounts I can give them to you, but I'll, I don't know if you want those really quick. Over three years, what has been held back from the cemetery district is $10,345.52. What's been held back from the fire department is $7,845.76. So the request is.
For years.
Three years. It's about 4,000 each year for the cemetery district, about a little over 3, 3100?
We're, we're about 3,100 right now. We started out at 1,648 dollars, I think, three years ago. And the last two years have been 3,100 dollars. That doesn't.
So I'm going to, I'm going to finish really quick and then on done. What I would request is that if we could make these two districts whole now and while the appeal process is going through in the next couple of years, if it takes, it sounds like it's, it's close. But, um, that's a request from what I think is more than fair to these small districts.
Just a second. Catherine, what was the number for the regular third?
The fire district was $7,845.76.
What about the city?
We collect, us, the city of Arlington, the city of Condon, um, the, the clinic and the school. The school doesn't seem to have an issue with it. They get state school support funds. The rest of us collect fees.
Okay.
We're okay. All right. We don't like it, but we're okay. Um.
Go ahead, Shannon. So just, I don't know if you guys have looked at this or are aware of this, but I brought the last year's, three years stuff for tax collections. And when you look at what the tax collections are, the South Gillum County Rural Fire Protection District gets less in tax dollars than any other taxing district that is listed on here. These kind of dollar amounts really hurt us. It doesn't seem like a lot when you're talking about 3,100 dollars a year. But when I talked to you last time, I told you that our insurance now is 19,000 dollars, which is 42% of our budget. So when you look at that, it's 42% of our budget with the tax dollars we collect. We get, we have a contract with the city of Condon. We're getting money from them. The ambulance service pays for the space in the building. So we're getting rent dollars from the ambulance service and we do rent the building out. We have never rented it out to the county because the county provided the funds for the building and we have never felt like it was right to charge the county rent for a building that they basically built for us. But we do charge other entities rent for the building. Um, when you look at us, we get 51,000 dollars was what we were projected to get three years ago. North Gillum Fire got 454,000 dollars. So when you think about taking 1,600 dollars out of our budget compared to the, these bigger budgets, it's, it's a bunch. I feel like you guys are here to support all of the citizens of Gillum County. And I really hope that, I'm kind of putting this back in your lap because I'm hoping that you guys can figure out a way to make these small taxing districts whole while this is going on because we are not getting part of that 454,000 dollars in tax dollars is not coming to this fire district on this end. If it was, we would be getting more than 51,000 dollars in taxes. And so when you look at what's happening with the north end taxing districts, they're getting a lot of money, yet we are the ones that are getting injured by this appeal with the entities that are only in the north end. And so I'm, I'm really hoping that you guys can figure out a way to make this so that our taxing districts are not being injured. And we are the only taxing district that doesn't charge fees for anything. We have, everybody else can charge fees for things. The cemetery districts, I'm sure charges a fee for.
They do, but, um.
It may not be much.
It, it's gone down a lot the last two years. Janet did send me that information and I can give that to you. I'll just leave it with you. Is that they've gone from collecting 9,100 dollars a couple of years ago to they've only collected 1,600 dollars, which is good. Not very many people are dying, right? But it's, it's, they're not collecting any fees.
I say make the proposal and present it to us.
What type of proposal did you, just a letter?
What you're telling us verbally, put it in writing with your documentation so that we can make an agenda item on our, uh, under new business and consider it and have a chance to look at it before. So make it a part of the agenda packet.
Would you, any of you want to see something different? Would you just email Shannon or I or both of us? If there's something in particular you want to see in this proposal other than what we have?
Right. I just want to see numbers and this is the first I've heard of a request and the ORS you referenced and, um, the, the dollar amounts we're looking at.
The whole thing too.
So that we can budget for it.
Yeah, the whole thing too is.
And it's just the two districts, correct?
I would say it's only the two districts. I mean, even the cemetery district, like you said, collects some fees. It's minimal. And they're running on a shoestring also. So I, I would definitely leave them in the mix. And, and I guess.
Your, your previous time, you had some of the breakdown for everybody I thought.
I do.
Yeah.
And I sent it to you. I think I sent it all to you. My, if not, I will resend it to all.
You resend that to me?
Yes, yes, yes. So, okay.
And I guess, I guess my thought with it is, is that we have not come and asked for operation money. The fire district has not. Um, we did request grant funding when we were building the building and then the county generously gave us, gave us money. And at this point, all we want to be made is whole so that we can continue to operate the best that we can with the budget that we have, which is when you're taking 3,000 dollars out of a 40-some thousand dollar tax amount, you're looking at what? 6% of the budget about.
Right. So. The last thing too is I, I think as, as this goes forward, I mean, one of the things we've heard over and over again is it's making it fair that if someone doesn't pay on one end of the county, you're, you know, you're helping the other end out or another, not one end of the county or not, but one taxing district to another. The thing is about it is I asked, the collection rate for Gillum County taxes is 98.5 to 99%. That's not an issue. It's just a very archaic way, in my opinion. Computers weren't even around in 1974. This, this shouldn't be that hard, but it's, it will be hard to try, try and make a change in the legislature.
Right.
This will help them in.
I want to make sure that our assessor's involved in.
I talked to him this morning.
Okay. In, in, in it, to be sure that we are, I mean, because he's the expert in, in tax values and appeals, et cetera. And again, I want to reiterate that this appeal is through the Department of Revenue, not our assessor. Um, and that's why it's, um, difficult to have any, um, local say in that. But bring your proposal and we'll definitely consider it.
Well, and I guess the, the county does grant funds to various entities for various things. We're not asking for more than what our taxes would be. We only want to be made whole for the taxes that are being taken away.
Right. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, here you go. Thanks.
Or anyone else who has public comment? General public comment? Anybody online? All right. Correspondence. We have Waste Management's tonnage summary for December, I believe, for the year 2024 tonnages up overall. Um, we have a Pro-Tim Justice of the Peace Appointment Letter from Justice of the Peace Perry Hader. And that document is presented to you. You have a Pressure's Financial Report for December 2024. And I'm just thinking here for a moment. I believe we need to, sorry about this, but I believe we need to move the Pro-Tim Justice of the Peace Appointment down to the consent agenda. So we're just going to move that down because it's not general correspondence. It does need some approval. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right. Next for public comment, we have agenda item update from Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Report for winners. Come on up.
Anya, did you get my presentation?
You're getting tested on technology today. I'm sorry.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Sir Winters, I'm the district manager for the Gillum Soil and Water Conservation District. Thank you for the opportunity to present, um, on what we've been up to 2024. I'll let Anya pull up presentation. Okay. If you, just at the very bottom, Anya, underneath the, the. Yep.
Can I turn it? Uh, sure. Does that one go to the running line?
Yes, please. Thank you.
That help everybody? I mean, how to refer the cause of violence?
I'll do better. Talk louder. Okay, so I'm just going to touch on, uh, what SWCD is because I'm not sure everybody knows exactly. Um, and then, uh, TMDLs, which folks might not know what those are either. And then major project efforts that we've been up to this year. Um, next slide, please, Anya. Okay, so think of SWCDs as like a special district, um, a school district or fire district. Uh, we're non-regulatory, uh, really focused on natural resource conservation. Uh, we're done by the Board of Directors, uh, just established under Oregon law to address soil erosion, water quality, other resource concerns. Uh, how are we funded? Uh, by state and federal grants. We are pretty much 100% grant funded, uh, for our positions there and the work that we do. Uh, there's approximately 13 conservation districts in the state that do, that are taxing districts. We are not one of them. There are 45 conservation districts in the state. Um, so, uh, the Department of Ag with, uh, the state has a, gives us capacity funding. So does Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. Um, what do we do? We really work with private landowners primarily, um, and, you know, helping them with conservation efforts on the ground by providing technical assistance, uh, education and outreach. And, um, our, our big role is bringing in funding into the county to do conservation work on the ground. And really, uh, we're there to help Oregon meet state, federal, environmental goals while balancing agriculture and community needs. So, uh, just real quick on the next slide, Anya. Here's our, uh, our Board of Directors and our district staff. Um, have, it's the best board I've ever worked for in my life and they're wonderful. Oh man, he'll never let me get away with that. Um, and yeah, we have a pretty small staff, myself, Norrie, Roger, and Jessica Gillen. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about TMDLs. That's Total Maximum Daily Loads. Uh, this has to do with pollutants in the waters of the state. Um, and this is, all comes back to the Clean Water Act. Uh, it's managed by Oregon DEQ. Um, there are designated management agencies, uh, to implement these TMDL plans and the county is a designated, designated, uh, management agency for TMDLs in Gillum County. Um, so when you're thinking of TMDLs, uh, the major TMDL in, uh, Gillum County is temperature. So that's considered a pollutant. Um, if the water is too hot, it's too hot for biological organisms. Uh, the big goal is to reduce stream temperatures um, in pretty much all of the waters, uh, in Gillum County, Lower John Day, John Day Basin, um, all together. So it is, these designation management areas are tasked with, um, basically creating plans and implementing the plans um, to keep the temperature particularly in Gillum County low. And so that's a big part of our work. Um, and you know, basically we, we do this by riparian plantings, fencing off creeks, uh, floodplain management projects. Um, next slide, please, Anya. So a little bit of a timeline where we are and where the SWCD fits into the county being the designated, designated management area. 2019, uh, DEQ contacted the county, uh, needed them to update their TMDL management plan. Uh, the county contacted us and we went and, um, said that we could become a partner with the county. We signed an IGA with the county in 2020, May of 2020. And since then, we've been providing annual reports to DEQ. Uh, right now, I am currently, uh, updating the TMDL management plan for the court's review. Um, sometime in March. And so I'll present that to you shortly. Um, and then we give that to DEQ and they approve it. So every five years, we need to update that plan. Um, and through that, we, through this IGA, the county gives us approximately 50,000 dollars annually to, uh, continue our work with, uh, stream, you know, keeping the, the temperatures down and things like that. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm just going to go with some major efforts, how, you know, how we are implementing the TMDL management plan in the county on behalf of, um, the county court. So to our first two bullets here are big funding, uh, opportunities that we've had since around 2019, 2020. That's the Regional Conservation Partnership Program and the Focus Investment Partnership Program. The RCPP is funded through the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is federal. And then the Focus Investment Partnership Program is through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board through the state. Uh, the. Uh, the RCPP is approximately four million dollars. The FIP is twelve million dollars. Um, that is broken up into three geographies, which I'll show. Um, I'll talk about open solicitation grants through the state. Uh, talk about some place-based planning efforts through the Oregon Watershed Resource, uh, Water Resources Department. Uh, touch on our Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, Small Grant Program, uh, and then some county-centric projects that we're working on. Um, next slide, please, Anya. And stop me at any time with any questions. I'm, I'm trying to go through this quickly. Okay, so the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, as I said, is an NRCS program that is focused um, on native fish habitat. Uh, but we also have an upwards focus. So through this program, we're really looking at juniper uh, control, uh, annual grasses, uh, fencing. Um, and then also they are uh, helping fund our BDA projects, which is, which is a Beaver Dam analog. Which was also called process-based restoration. I'll talk about that in a little bit. But again, this has started in twenty twenty. And now it's twenty twenty five. We are in our last year of an RCPP. Uh, we plan to renew this with uh, with NRCS. I know right now with the federal government, things are up in the air. We're not sure how things are going to shake out. But just talked with the NRCS Basin Team Leader yesterday, he seems, you know, once the dust settles, we can start talking about renewal. Um, so we'll probably be asking for another four million dollars in twenty twenty six to continue this work. Uh, talking about expanding that out into the Rock Creek Watershed, um, which is right here on the right is the map. Which is Butte Creek, Thirty Mile, Ferry Canyon, and Hay Creek. We'll just expand into Rock Creek if it works for everyone. Uh, I think Lone Rock, Olex areas. Um, and then we're also going to revisit our practices there, the kind of projects we could be uh, making about more virtual fence type things, which I'll touch on again. Um, next slide, please, Anya. So just some quick numbers on the RCPP. This is a partnership between the SWCD and the Natural Resource Conservation Service. These are the uh, number of contracts that have been done uh, through the years with approximate contracted values. So this is, these are payments going to uh, Gillum County producers to make uh, natural resource improvements on the property. Um, we have about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars left. Um, right now, NRCS is ranking those applications. We got twenty four applications uh, for twenty twenty five. And we'll wrap those up this year and then start our renewal process. Um, on the right is just a, a good old fashioned spring development project. Just a nice little big cross. Next slide, please. Okay, folks, investment partnership. This is the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Initiative. Again, steelhead focus. Um, see a pattern here. Uh, we, a lot of our funding comes focused on steelhead habitat. Uh, since two thousand fifteen, or two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, we've done fifteen projects through this initiative for about uh, two million dollars. Think Beaver Dam Analog's uh, Skillet Habitat type projects. Um, the final offering for this, which is also ending, is actually today, when I get done uh, with this presentation. I'll go back to the office and hopefully put in one more application here. Uh, but again, we're going to try to renew this funding source. Um, probably for maybe fifteen to twenty million dollars for the state. Uh, the John Day Basin Partnership is currently working um, on drafting that application. Which will be due um, first part of twenty six. Um, I'm on the steering committee for the John Day Basin Partnership. As the Conservation District um, kind of representative. So right now on that map, you can see the three geographies that are priority geographies for this initiative. Um, the green to the west is a Butte Thirty Mile Project area, which is where we've been getting our funds for Gillum County. Uh, the other two are Middle Fork, North Fork. I'm hoping that we continue these same priority geographies. And we can still continue to have access to this funding, but time will tell, um, as we prioritize. Next slide, please. So just real quick, folks, investment partnership, what we've been up to in twenty twenty four. Uh, we have this thirty, thirty mile monitoring phase four project. We're really looking at uh, small house, small mouth bass influence on steelhead. Um, in Thirty Mile. This is indicative of the whole John Day where we have small mouth bass moving into the tributaries. And consuming thousands of steelhead. Uh, that's a big partners, ODFW. Um, ODFW is finally admitting that that is an issue. Um, through our work, um, through this initiative. Also, we are working with the BLM on the lowest ten miles. I'll show a map here shortly about what that looks like. Um, but that has been years in the making. We are finally getting work done on the BLM that we're all excited about. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on two projects, the Thirty Mile Hydrologic Assessment and the Middle Thirty Mile Restoration Project. Uh, the hydrologic assessment is really kind of looking at where these streams are drying up. Um, it's happening through all of our steelhead streams in uh, Gillum County and the John Day Basin. Trying to learn wh- what's causing that and can we actually do anything about it? Uh, the second one is the Middle Thirty Mile Restoration Project. This is again, is the BDAs that we've been up to. Um, I'll show you a short video of what those actually look like. Um, but this is kind of the next project for twenty twenty four. It was funded in twenty twenty four. We're hoping to implement it this summer. Um, and that's ninety two uh, Beaver Dam Analog's and forty five post-assisted log structures, which are really just um, mimicking beavers. Um, in the stream systems. So next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about the hydrologic assessment real quick, and this is a little complicated. Um, I don't fully understand it. But we have, we're working with Oregon State University, uh, Dr. Herzog, um, and his grad students. Here's a map of the Thirty Mile Watershed. Uh, the five dots on there are stream gauges, the temporary stream gauges that they put in the Thirty Mile Watershed. I'm going to talk about the fifth stream gauge there, which is just upstream from the, the Highway nineteen bridge. Um, and so in the orange are what we call losing reaches or stream segments that are going dry every summer. That we know historically did not go dry, and so we're trying to find out what has happened.
That's kind of yellow to me, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Um, and so I'll talk about those two reaches in particular with the next slide, please, Anya. Okay, so this is where it gets a little complicated, but um, the bars on this graph are those, those stream reaches in between the stream gauges. Now, think of each one of those stream reaches as a bathtub that is full of gravel. So, and the lines coming across the graph are the flow that is happening at that fifth stream gauge. That is upstream of the Highway nineteen bridge. So what we can see here is on the, on the left is cubic feet per second. So that's how much water is flowing through um, that one particular stream gauge. And if uh, in order for the number two uh, bar there, which is that big, long losing reach. There needs to be approximately four and a half cubic feet of water flowing through that number five gauge. To keep water on the surface um, towards the mouth. And then number four is that other losing reach, which we need um, almost one point five cubic feet of flow coming through there. And soon as they go, it goes below that threshold, that's when um, those stream reaches go dry. And you're wondering maybe, why is this important? Why are you trying to figure this out? Well, these folks are going out there with like ground penetrating radar. They're, think of these bathtubs, or think of the floodplain as bathtubs full of cobble. And the bathtub full of cobble is the flood plain. It needs to be filled up subsurface to a certain level to where it actually comes on. Where we can see water in the stream. And so we can see through the study that we can get surface water back. In stream region number four, way easier than stream reach number two. Uh, we only need in stream reach number four, really two more gallons to be flo- flowing through that fifth stream gauge to get water on the surface. So that gives us hope that we can actually get water on the surface on reach number four. Reach number two, we don't know yet, probably not. And, and if we could, should we spend the amount of resources there? So these are all questions we're trying to figure out through these studies. I find it's extremely interesting. Um, and I know it's complicated, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, next slide, please. So this is a kind of our, what we've been up to for the last few years, um, with this process-based restoration. Now, I wanted to show this map because this is extraordinary, I think. Um, and not just because of what the SWCD's been up to, but what the private landowners in Gillum County have been up to. This map shows, you can see the black line um, to the south. That is in Wheeler County. Now, as we head downstream through the kind of yellow, tan, purple, red, blue, green that is heading downstream. This is uh, nine different private landowners that have let us come onto their property voluntarily and install Beaver Dam analogs. Uh, we're talking about about thirty miles of stream. The lowest ten miles is BLM that I mentioned earlier. Uh, it was easier for us to get work done on private land and then it was on BLM. We're finally working there, but there needs to be a huge shout out to our private producers, agriculture producers that are letting us do this work. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do this. And I can't think of anyplace else in the West where this type of participation is happening. And there are a lot of eyes on this watershed because of this. The uh, American Fisheries Society Annual Conference is in Bend this year. And they're having just an entire session on Thirty Mile and everything that's been happening there. Um, so this is uh, this, everybody in Gillum County should be proud of what's going on here. It's really, really, like I said, extraordinary. Um, thousands of structures have been put in uh, through here. Next slide, please, Anya. We're going to try to play a video and hopefully it works. Um, just want to show you real quick what these things look like. So this is at the upper end near the Wheeler County um, border. And you can see in the stream, these are the Beaver Dam analogs, so basically a fake Beaver Dam. This uh, just got planted, sorry for the choppiness of it, but this just got planted, it's been fenced. Um, this is really going to be a showcase project, and I'm going to show you next kind of the other things that we're up to. Um, but you can see them going across the stream. We're really just shaking up the stream system here, providing fish habitat. Beavers used to be out on the landscape. There, there are very few of them anymore. We're happy to report that downstream of this project where we actually have vegetation, the beavers have moved in. We have videos of them cutting down cottonwood trees, building dams on top of these fake Beaver Dams that we've made. With the idea, we want this to happen throughout the whole system, because then we don't have to go back and spend money to make these. We can just have them maintain them uh, for everyone. So, and we're really lucky that we can get this done, that the landowners are acceptive, excepted of these, these rodents out there dinking around in the creek. And they're just doing really good things. Um, we can go to the next slide, please. Okay. Uh, sorry, I'm going very fast, but a lot to cover here. Uh, open solicitation, this is also through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. Um, on the table here, um, the bottom is kind of, we have two times every year that we apply for grants to the state. Um, and right now we have thirteen open grants through a web. Um, in twenty twenty four, we um, were awarded six new grants. For around six hundred and sixty uh, thousand dollars. From twenty one to twenty four, uh, we've got over four million dollars from the state. Um, I, our shop is really good at writing grants. We're really successful getting them, getting money into the state uh, for the people of Gillum County. And I just wanted to showcase that. Next project, please, or next slide, please. This is a, an example project that is really kind of our bread and butter. So I just, that video that we just watched was in-stream work. I talked about fencing things off, uh, plantings. We have these fake Beaver Dams going in, and that's in the green um, on the right-hand side of this map. Um, this is what we call the Comstock Basin Livestock Distribution Project. So why I want to showcase this is we have our funders that really want to fund in-stream work, right? It's all about the fish, but we also are an agricultural producing county. And it is the first thing that we're trying to enhance, right? So we get funding to do this in-stream work, but then we go to our funders and say, well, what about the agricultural side of this thing, the production side? So with this project, we also asked the state for cross-fencing, to tear out woven wire, uh, fence that's not good for uh, antelope and mule deer crossing through there. And then some extra um, livestock uh, watering system. So this here is, is, is a showcase project. We've pretty much gone through the whole ranch. And put a lot of good prac- practices on the ground to help everything from the fish to the cattle. Um, and this is the kind of thing that we're trying to do every day at the SWCD. Next slide. And this is kind of zooms in, so you guys can see it, but there's a lot going on there, and it's a great project. Um, again, virtual fencing program development, I, we're going to be back in March to give you a full update on everything. After the county made the investment on our virtual fencing program. But this is, we, the county graciously made that investment. Uh, since that has happened, um, the SWCD has written three grants. Uh, to get more funding. This particular grant is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have another uh, fifty thousand dollar grant that has been submitted. And then I'll go over our FEMA application, uh, which is about one point seven million dollars, which is all kind of tied in with this virtual fencing program.
Or was there other counties going, doing the same thing right now, or?
They're watching us. So we were part of a workshop last week. Um, that was uh, hosted by OSU in Ontario, but we have set up a satellite um, viewing up at the, the fire hall in town. Um, and basically, since we, the, the district owns ten of these towers now. And uh, we are trying to figure out how we can increase our early adoption of the technology. We have Sustainable Northwest as a partner, which is a nonprofit out in Portland. They just flew a job um, position to, that is specifically to help us. Develop this program. Um, we interviewed folks over the last two weeks. Um, should select someone early March that is basically going to be helping us develop this. Um, to answer your question, um. The, the model that we have come up with for this uh, virtual fencing program is probably going to be the ones that folks are going to try to emulate. Across the West. Um, where we, like I said, we own these, we are actively working with several different partners with OSU, the Eastern Oregon Ag Research Center. Um, and like, I, I was kind of kidding, but really folks are seeing how this works out for us. Um, and we're all very excited. We have all the right players, um, and I'm excited to give you a more robust update next month. Um, next slide, please. Again, uh, going back into the fires, we have uh, what we call the John Day Basin Post-Fire Technical Assistance Grant. Um, on the map on the right were all the fires that were in the John Day Basin this summer. Again, extraordinary, like almost an eighth of the John Day Basin burned. Um, so with that, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board uh, created a special funding pool to help with all these fires. And the partnership did something that's unique, um, got all the conservation districts and all the watershed councils together. To put in a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. Um, now this is, because so much acreage burned. Um, and it's such a complex issue, what we're using this funding for is getting uh, the uh, the Forest Service, uh, Oregon Department of Forestry. Like I said, these watershed councils and SWCDs all together to look at all these different fires, combine resources. And come up with restoration plans across the basin for all these fire footprints. Ten years ago, this wouldn't have ever happened. It, and, and I'm not going to say it was smooth, but we did all come together. And this is going to be um, again, another model for the state to look at, where we're all working together to figure out what we can do. Following the really unprecedented fire year. Uh, next slide, please. Place-based planning, this um, uh, is, is a Oregon Water Resources Department initiative. We, uh, the Lower John Day uh, Place-Based Planning Group is another pilot, one of four in the state that we um, initiated. Uh, this is just an update for that. We've been doing this since two thousand sixteen. Um, but we were asked by some state representatives to put together a water package for the Lower John Day. And through this, I don't know if this is going to be funded, but we put the ask in. It's for about a million dollars. Um, some of it is for capacity and outreach, that is for the group to continue working uh, to, to basically work on water resources. In our place in the Lower John Day. Um, and then again, with this is data monitoring Thirty Mile Creek. I talked a lot about our um. The research that's going on there. We're asking for more funding to continue that because we think it's valuable. Uh, water conservation, we have um, folks that uh, are getting letters from the Water Resources Department. That they're required to have uh, flow measuring devices on their pumps along the John Day River. There is some funding there to help them uh, purchase those flow measuring devices. They're about two thousand dollars a piece. With some producers having, you know, ten or thirteen pumps. Uh, that's a huge expense. Uh, so we are asking for more funding from the state to help with those devices. Uh, another smaller project is to help with some flooding and spray. And another uh, project uh, kind of in that package is to look at fish passage barriers in the west branch of uh, Bridge Creek in Wheeler County. Again, this is all the Lower John Day uh, initiatives, so those are taking place in other counties. Just some things we've been up to. Uh, next slide, please. I, I always have to give a plug for the Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, which Roger uh, Blathrip administers for our SWCD. But this is an older program. It's been around since nineteen ninety nine. We feel it, it's a valuable program and continue to promote it. Uh, twenty twenty four, we've had three contract renewals. These contracts um, are through the Farm Service Agency, for those who don't know about it. Um, to basically use, have use exclusion along the creeks where we fence things off, plantings and things like that. Um, and four new contracts in here for about a hundred acres. Next slide, please. We also have our small grant program. Uh, this is administered by the Watershed Council, East uh, John Day Watershed Council. These grants are small. These grants are small, we try to um focus in the north end of the county where we don't have these other large funding pools. So they're for fifteen thousand dollars, we usually use them for spring developments, cross fences. Uh, and juniper projects. So this is what we accomplished in twenty twenty four. We currently have nine small grants open with the Oregon Watership Enhancement Board. Next slide please. Uh, Lower Willow Creek Managed Aquifer Recharge Feasibility Study. This is an effort down uh the lower end of Willow Creek. Um, the county has invested in this project, also eleven thousand dollars of the hundred and five thousand. Uh, just as a reminder, this is um. Uh, trying to uh you perform a feasibility study to see if during the winter months when Willow Creek has. An ample amount of surface water, can we safely pump water back into the aquifer for storage? Um, for irrigators uh in the summertime. So this is a, gonna be a phased project. Um, we have GSI that is uh the uh consultant on this project is being pretty much ran through the moral SWCD, but we are a partner. Um, we are gonna be meeting with landowners uh in March to go over this project. Um, we don't know a lot yet, but we're just, like I said, just starting that study and um I'll be pleased to bring more updates in the future on it. Next slide please honey. Uh, Lone Rock Wildfire Mitigation Project, I alluded to this, um, this is a post-fire. Uh, grant that um we're putting in through OEM and FEMA. Uh, came to the court um a couple of weeks ago asking about this. Um, the ask is for one point seven million dollars. This are just some metrics. Um, out in the Lone Rock area, you know, a lot of that juniper burned. Uh, but there's some left and we have an opportunity to really um knock it down and get a handle on the juniper in that area, or really the juniper in Gillum County. So roughly two thousand acres in this grant for that, a thousand acres of chemical treatment for annual grasses. Uh, biomass removal, um, you know, where we have a whole bunch of trees that are falling over, we, that's a fire risk also, we want to get those out of there, but. Um, FEMA will be paying for seventy-five percent of this, we will be writing again OWEB grants to make up to twenty-five percent. We say only twenty-five percent, but um we're going to shoot to do a dollar for dollar amount with the state. So we'll hopefully bring in even more funding into Gillum County through this project. Uh, one more slide please. Hey, uh, this is just a, another plug for our annual meeting. Which is March eleventh at the Parish Hall in Town, Grand Night Dinner. Uh, we have Dustin Hebert coming from NNS Tractor to pretty much give uh uh technology and agriculture presentations, thank drones. Thank uh reduced herbicide use sprayers, um, maybe some uh. Um, yeah, drone, mostly drone technology stuff we're gonna try to bring, uh, get some, some info for our producers. Uh, and I think that's it. So sorry, I was going really fast there, but that's what we've been up to, um, it's last year.
Great.
Thanks, thank you.
I have a question though, the aquifer part when you're talking about throwing the aquifer, is that the same project that went to the board?
It started at the board, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and now it's uh basically, it is a, a, again, another Water Resource Department project through their feasibility grant program. Uh, and more SWCD is the applicant is administering that grant, um, and so we're just a partner there, but. Um, what's exciting about that for us is, is what we learn in Willow Creek. And we can extrapolate that information out into Rock Creek, so maybe if that works in Willow Creek, we might be able to do something similar. Um, the only problem there is, is it's very expensive. Um, you, if you're pumping surface water out. Back into the aquifer, there's a lot of safeguards that you have to do to make sure that you aren't contaminating that water somewhere through that process.
Great. Anything available?
Oh, thank you.
The passion for what you do is wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Very lucky to have you and all that you do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your whole team.
Thank you, yeah, they're great.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is update. From Gillum County Road Committee, Dewey Kennedy and Frank Beck in Oregon, whoever else is here with you, come on up if you'd like. And we can put more chairs up if you need to. You're just here for moral support or you're gonna come up? Okay. Okay, so. I'll do it for you. We have Frank Beck, Dorc Hall in Oregon, and Dewey Kennedy, Road Master, go ahead.
Okay, all we, mostly what we have is figures. We spent two years studying this and, and doing what research we could in. And we've come to some conclusions that is, we hope will help Gillum County. Gillum County has four hundred and twenty-eight miles of county, of county road. We only have a hundred and thirty-three miles of paved roads in Gillum County. And we have, through our research, we found that. You know, uh, if any paved road in, in uh, or, they'll pay itself back in ten years of maintenance on a gravel road. Our gravel roads are impossible, they're wore out. They're down where there, you can't really, there's nothing to work with, there's no material or anything left on them, most of them. They're getting down now to where it's gonna be terribly, terribly expensive to do anything about them. Our, the roads are very important as a people who live in the country, it's very important to agriculture. And I think that, that it would be a. Uh, a huge benefit to Gillum County if we had better roads. Because there's a, there's buildings and housing thing out in the country that's not being used, and some of it is because of our roads. They're just too hard to travel on. The, the, the road department, the Advisory Committee is recommending to the county court. That the, the county needs at least two more people on their, on their payroll. They're a little short on help. And they need, they need uh a larger budget to keep up with this paving project. That's gonna be, the longer we wait, the more expensive it becomes, and the more it's gonna cost. In the last twenty-four years. We've only paved on an average of four miles a year. That's just not gonna cut it, we're getting farther behind all of them, we're probably forty to fifty miles, fifty years behind now. We need to do, we need to do these things quickly. The longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna get. It's like everything else in this world. You know, the more you put it off, the more it's gonna cost you. We need, we need, we need those things and we need them as quickly as possible, so we can get these things done. The, the increase in budget is very important to, to all these projects. And our roadmaster will, he will, over time, he can figure out those figures. We can't do that because we're not there with him every day. And I don't think anyone's wanna be. That's kind of it.
Okay.
The, the biggest issue that, that I have with the road department is no dedicated source of funding. Um, we've lost our yearly funding package. Now, now I get uh, uh, the money from the state, from the House Bill of two thousand seventeen. And our motor vehicle license and gas tax money. And then any other money than I, I basically build my projects and come and ask the court for funding. There's not a, I, so I can't budget until I basically come in.
Any, any emergency equipment or anything that happens during the year, he's just dead in the water. It's, it's really, we're really not serving the people of Gillum County.
Is there a, a road plan? Is there like a ten-year road plan that's documented that says that? This next year, our plan is to uh proceed and pave this section or? Is there a ultimate plan we're gonna be able to make based on a timeline?
Every year I come to the Budget Committee with a, I call it a working road plan. Which is basically all the projects that we can do with cost estimates of all of those. Nothing's set in stone just because of uh materials that are available. Uh, where we're working, the weather, um, just other things that come up. But yes, we have a, we have a uh working road plan, I call it. Um, I have a crusher plan, so I can try to keep the crusher out ahead of us as we, as we do these projects. So I have material available when we are, um, equipment replacement. I try to put that in every year, um, as our stuff wears out. Try to keep it more up to date and, and stuff. So we have a, yes, there is a plan, um, it's nothing, nothing's set in stone.
Yes, everything depends so much on the weather and the availability of the equipment. We never know what's gonna happen with anything.
Do you, uh, so with. I, I understand without a, a mountain to work on every year, the dedication towards paving or improving the gravel roads. I guess I, or is, would it be hard to come up with, okay, if we, if you were to get that funding? Okay, this is what we're gonna do, like, uh, over the first year, second year, uh, identify the worst of the worst, I guess.
Yes, yes, I've got it, I've got it set up now. Uh, I, I try to use a little strategy and save money so that I can. You know, if there is anything, I can go ahead and do one or two projects that there are. The, the biggest thing is keeping the crusher out ahead of us, keeping material. That's the, that's the best thing the county has. We have, you know, our material is, is available. And uh, it's close to most of our projects.
I, I have one other question. Um, so the existing paved roads that we have now. Um, any idea a rough percentage on? What percent will have to be addressed or repaved or are, are paved roads that we have now, pretty good shape?
Most, most of our paved roads now, we've kept up on our, on our maintenance, our chip seals and stuff like that. We've got some that were, I hope to, to address this summer. That will put a top on them, which will, which will uh hold them for another ten to fifteen years. Uh, we're in pretty good shape, that's why we're, we're reaching out and trying to do more. We have, we've got the, we've got the equipment, we've got the, the ability. And, and stuff to do these and make these improvements. I just need to be able to.
Sure.
Add a little vision and go out ahead and, and get everything prepped and ready on ahead of time.
I didn't realize some of the gravel roads were in that dire need, I just thought you had to haul a little more rock in once in a while with the base, everything.
Yes, yeah.
Permanent and it's.
Yeah.
They're just more out.
They're degrading.
Yeah, they're degrading. Um, we've, we've hauled hundreds of thousands of yards of gravel through the years out onto these roads and. Our, our equipment's getting bigger, yeah, it's driving faster.
Sure.
The material just leaves.
Lockdown, aren't it?
No. So we're not looking at paving roads where you're gonna go down five miles and you've got one person on that five-mile road.
No, I, I try to put together my, where uh. It's going to help agriculture and multiple landowners. Plus it, it will save us on maintenance. You know, we, we've got roads that, that you grade them and then just with traffic and, and. The way the roads are configured, they just go bad.
Well, they're on, they're on a rocky block.
Yeah, you know, ninety-degree corners and, and stuff like that, so. Trying to fix them a piece at a time.
And, and I'm not gonna say anything I haven't worked frankly before when he's been in my office, that I've been around long enough to see roads get.
Destroyed.
And then fall completely apart, go back to gravel.
Yeah.
And now are paved again, so. And, and a lot of our concern back then was, and we leased ourselves because we had to drive them.
Mm-hmm.
Is staying off the roads while, you know, the frost comes out of the ground or whatever, but it's like we, you know.
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna have an issue where we have to stay off those roads, cause?
That's, that's what, hopefully I can stay a step ahead of all of that and get everything fixed so that that isn't an, an issue. If we pave them. Um, some of those roads are just, you know, we've been fixing drainage. It, it's a, it's a maintenance thing, once you get the maintenance done and get it ready, then you throw the pavement on it and it's a, it's a permanent fix then.
Well, I don't disagree, it's nice to have a paper versus a, but. I just wanted to make sure we weren't paving everything just because and.
No, no.
Limited people.
Yeah.
On it, cause I could think of roads that, you know, you go a long ways and they're one little farm.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're.
What we think everybody, everybody in Gillum County is just as important as anybody else. It doesn't matter where you live or how far out you live, if you're renting a house or you're a farmer, it doesn't matter. The roads are important and they have an awful lot to do with the economy of our county, it's very important. We gotta have good roads and, and the committee has emphasized and Dewey knows, has always been. When we pave a road, do it permanently, we're not gonna go back and have to do it again. And it's gonna cost a lot of money, but it's cheaper in the long run.
Infrastructure, infrastructure. And through some of our county college education and AOC education and anytime there's a road um popping. We, we're told that it's cheaper to um pave a road maintained than it is to maintain a gravel road.
In the, and in the meantime, the road department is getting all of our gravel roads prepared for payment by, by, you know. Red, getting wider and whatever needs to be done.
Always room for improvement.
Okay. We'll be talking about the budget and you'll be talking to the road community.
We feel that the, besides the budget, there should be a, a fixed sum of money. That's dedicated to the road department every year, no matter what. Because you can't predict everything.
Yeah.
And, and it might, it might stop some progress in the road department because of a piece of equipment. Or something like that, that he needs to be able to fall back on.
Yeah, well, and I think the road doc funding is way of the middle, right?
It, 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 it is, yeah. Yeah. And if we lose, even a portion of that will hurt.
So much depends on the weather, gotta be able to work when we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have update from Finance Department, Brooklyn Griffith Finance Director.
Thank you. Brooklyn Griffith Finance Director, Gillum County, here to provide my update. Um, I guess I just provided a brief update upon what. I don't like to see myself over here on ya, I'm screaming at myself. Um, was this department, the Finance Department was created in July of two thousand and twenty-three as a new department. We hired a finance director at that time who was here until. I think May was the official um exit of the past Finance Director, May of twenty twenty-four. At that time when I came on, it was just Leah and I in the entire county court, so a, a group of five, it was down to the two of us there for a couple of weeks. Um, which just right off the bat led to a very steep learning curve. Which I think I adapted to with uh civility and tenacity and confidence and a lot of experience-based learning. Definitely, um. Work, I mean constantly learning something new the last eight months, discovering something new, unearthing something new. Um, having a new scenario present itself, we've worked through many firsts, I guess, in these last. Eight months, especially with appointed judge and appointed commissioner, once they became actuals as well. Um, they, they began transitioning to payroll programs in December of two thousand and twenty-three, which. Is, it's called PayPro, kind of irrelevant, but that's our, our third party that we utilize. That in itself came with many challenges that we're still working through, um. From them being like an east coast company, so three-hour delay, to just the import issues we've been having. Uh, into our old accounting program, CHABS, which has now just fed into our new accounting program, CASL. Um, but I also really love PayPro, I think it has a lot of positives. As it's simplified payroll from, from my understanding, which has also allowed for better time tracking of employees. PayPro does file our federal and state quarterly taxes, but other than that, it's within the Finance Department um to process monthly payroll. As well as the department heads that oversee their employees. Overall, I think that the move to, it's a web-based payroll program was a, a great decision for the court, I think that's been a good move, I, I. Do not want to go backwards um to paper time sheets, I think that PayPro is, is a great program overall and we're just. As with any transition to a new program, it's still only been a year that we've been in there, so, or little things will pop up, but. Um, we've also hired ten new employees, so we, we can do all of our terminating and hiring in PayPro as well, which has made for a smooth process, I guess. For me, having ten employees brought on in the last eight months. Has made for a smooth process, I guess, for me having ten employees brought on in the last eight months. It's been very user-friendly. Aside from Pay Pro, we've all, they also began a transition with accounting softwares in September, I believe, of two thousand and twenty-three. And that is something we're still working through. Um, so that's been about an eighteen month-long process. Uh, as many are aware, for the recall, it was kind of put on the back burner. And the past finance director was working through that, and then at her exit, we just had so many other things we were working through that the transition to Casell didn't happen until. Um, the, the fall of twenty twenty-four slash this winter. We did our live training just this last month, so we're in Casell now. Uh, we still have access to CHAVS and I think I'm just keeping that as like a safety net, but we're one hundred percent in Casell. Um, we'll be doing our budget out of Casell. Everything, you know, our accounts payable, our general ledger, reconciling, all of that will come on Casell, um, which. I think it's, it has a lot more user functionality to it than our past accounting program did. Um, I can pull a lot more of my own reports, whereas before I was having to go to CHAVS to, to get an Excel version of a document, which. Really hinders a lot of things, cause some, you know, they have their own jobs that they're doing, they're not at our beck and call, so it could take. Two, three, a week plus to get just a single Excel version of a document. Um, Casell, we got all sorts of file formats. We can export, which is really nice. Plus just a, a large variety of reports that we can get and other functionalities. Um, they have a document management program that we're gonna look into for some of our leases and agreements, which is just included in our, um. General, whatever that would be called, profile, our system. Let's see, anything else in Casell?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so are, now with Casell, are we able to have the departments be able to go in and work?
Um, that's called connect online. We have, we have not got to that stage yet, but I guess that will be an end result product. Um, the departments will have web-based access to, we can like narrow it down to all departments, or they can have access to only their department. They'll be able to go in there and look at their budget comparisons to actuals. Um. There's a lot more steps to it, but I think that's our first step, but we could get to the point where they're submitting their invoices through there and. We're just approving them, they're, they're doing everything in the backend, but, um, right now, them being able to access their, their budgets whenever they want to will be a big. A big kudos, yes.
That'll be helpful. I'm looking at the back of the room.
Yeah.
Um, and you, and I think I already talked to you about this, but the payroll is that, that, that transition is way better than what.
We're hoping, um, it's, yeah, fortunately, it's, has not been a very smooth process whatsoever. Um. That's all I'll really say to that. It is, we're still working to get entries into Casell, but I met with Portland yesterday, this morning. Um, of course, again, we're at their whim. He was out all last week, once we had our live training, so we weren't able to. To push as hard as we wanted to to get our payroll entries entered, but I think after yesterday and this morning, um, we're all on the same page and we're moving forward with payroll, and I think that. Yes, in the future, once we get caught up, it'll be a seamless process, because I can just, you know, have templates, it'll just import it. Um, encode it how I want to, but.
I will just say, having gone through the county transition and prior position, it's a huge undertaking.
Yes.
Because. For you, you were new. Plus, you have no, too little to no resources. You had an old system that you didn't know. Most people that are making a track, uh, accounting transfer know the old system.
Yeah.
Then you're transitioning to a new system under difficult circumstances, plus doing your regular job. You're doing all of it, and I just, I just wanna commend you, um, for getting us through this, because. Special person to hang in there who have, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I'm not one to back down from.
I know.
From difficulties, um, so it's, it's been a great learning process through the, these last eight months, absolutely. Um, we had our financial audit for twenty-four, which began in September. We have received another extension that was filed on behalf of our auditors through the end of February. That came Monday morning, when I came into the office. Um, I still have not heard back from our auditors, though I have called and emailed, so I do not know. The reasonings why or what they may need from us to finish that, but as of now, we have been approved for that extension from the state through the end of February. Um, with that audit, we, we ended up selecting new auditors for this fiscal year, um, which just comes. I think at any time with its own challenges, because they're wanting to dig into a lot more things. Um, so this, this financial audit that we just did for. Um, twenty-four was extensively more in-depth than, uh, prior audits, so that. Has added another level to it as well. Um, I think we are expecting some non-compliance items, but we're just moving forward with those in a, in a positive light. Um, in developing policies and procedures that are recommended to us from those financial audits and, and. Doing better. Um, we've had additional audits and reviews as well. I had a safe audit this week, actually, yesterday. Um, we were selected for that, so that's been a fun learning process as well. Um. And then we're beginning to work on our FY twenty-six budget. We're hoping to have, uh, actuals to comparisons to the department heads this next week. Um, and then they get a few weeks to provide us narratives and get their sheets together with our first budget meeting being in the beginning of April.
We had our meeting, we had a just a sit down.
Yeah.
The finance department and the administrative department, just to. Um, talk about the budget process and how we want the budget to look and potentially adding the narrative and making sure that we understand. We, we have a great foundation for relationships, so everybody can work together well, so that the whole process is smooth.
Yeah, so, like, that, that actually goes right into my next bullet point, is that, um, over the last eight months, I think. I've worked really hard to build those relationships with our departments and the employees. Um, continuously offering an open door policy, being there for, uh, questions, concerns, ideas. I'm. A very open person and I love collaboration and I love teamwork, and I think we focused a lot of that these last eight months is. Building back up those relationships that, that may have been lost with the prior, um, administration or finance director. We're constantly working to bring efficiencies to the county with updating our electronic forms. Um, our accounts payable are now accessible to all the department heads on our shared network drive. Um, those are just scanned in as I process them, so that if department has, you know, wondering if an invoice has been paid or they just wanna copy of that invoice, that's easily accessible to them. Um, been working on the employee tracking, updating the employee handbook is something on our, our future. And then just bringing clarity to policies and procedures. That are kind of just great. It's been a big project. These last few months. Um, I also just want to take the time to thank. Two individuals specifically that have been instrumental in my success here at the county, cause without their guidance or expertise, I, I would not have been. I, I would have suffered tremendously and not have been as successful as I have been able to be, just answered, they answered endless questions for me or bounced off ideas. Um, which would be Ellen Wagner, the county clerk, and then Nathan Ham, Hammer, our treasurer. I just, I owe a great deal. Um, to their guidance and knowledge and patience, definitely their patience with me over the last eight months, so. Definitely wanted to give a shout out to those two individuals, um, plus the judge and commissioners for even, for giving me this opportunity to prove myself here at the county. I know that by coming into this position, there was a lot of contention, um. But I don't, I want everyone to know that I never felt belittled or, uh. Uninvited or downgraded or anything like that. I think that the county has a really great team of people. Um, I felt nothing but just graciously welcomed, I guess, into this group, so that's a big. Was a big concern for me, I guess, initially, and I'm just happy to announce that I never felt that, and. I think we all really get along well here and, um, I appreciate the team that the county has and. Under your guys' leadership, I, I really appreciate that, so. I feel like the last eight months, maybe I've just constantly been circling or slowly dredging, but. I, I'm finally seeing the light at the, at the end of a very, very long tunnel. Um, so I'm excited. For what twenty twenty-five passed to bring and what we're able to do, once we work through everything we've been working through these last eight months, so. Any questions or?
Yeah, I'm right in the middle of that, you had the first fire season that you.
Yes, there's also that, um, I've, I. Am rostered to our state fire team, one of our state fire teams. We have three type one, um, incident management teams and I was. Afforded the opportunity to remain with that, so I, I appreciate those opportunities you guys have given me as well, um. Cause that was a, a pretty crazy fire season, yeah.
Well, I wanna thank you for your effort and everything you've done, and, uh. I think we're very fortunate to have somebody of your caliber and work ethic and just appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Yep.
Little mountain to go up to.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thanks.
Consent agenda five point oh. Items on the consent agenda are consider minutes, January fifteenth, town hall meeting and January eighth and twenty-second, regular meetings. Consider approval of bills pending review.
I did have a thought about that, sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
I did have a thought about the, um, those that I wanted to address. You guys really fast, that's a monthly bill approval. Are you guys okay with that? Just the first meeting of the month, it'll be the, uh, transactions for the previous thirty days, anything over five hundred dollars. Um, you'll see that there and it has like your guys' approvals on the last page. I think that follows with the horse statue.
One else.
And then, of course, they're online. The bills will be posted online after the first meeting.
That's great. Thank you. And the other item on the consent agenda is the readjustment on the agenda, uh, moving down, um, pro temp justice appointment. From Terry Peter, Justice of the Peace. Well, I think the only thing I would like to say is I do, I, we, our auto care business is on that. Bills, okay, to review, but you're reviewing them and.
Right.
We're just okay, you reviewing them, okay. Do you think we should get an opinion on that at all? And figure out how we should handle it, because it could happen to Commissioner Wilkins too, yeah. Um, it might be a good.
Just, just.
We have, uh, written guidance and then we can keep it in the county files and it can be passed on if other commissioners are put in the same position. Um. To be sure that you're covered if I'm covering the bills and we're voting on the consent.
Well, and the other, the other thing to that is if there's one that is. Presents to you.
Right.
Whether or not one of us is, needs to review.
Right.
So, okay. Anyway.
Yeah, well, I always wanna make sure I brought that up.
Right, on the record.
Anya, can we look into that with the government ethic? Just get a, see if we can get a written statement from them. Uh, okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the justice of peace appointments?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it was a re-discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm motion carries. Right. Next item, unfinished business. Consider approval of a word of contract for Cedar Springs Road relocation engineering service, Dewey Kennedy. Okay? Come on up.
Okay, uh, uh, we met this morning and scored the, uh, the two firms, did. Uh, the scoring was fairly close, but we, uh, we chose Anderson Perry. Was, uh, pretty much unanimous. With the group to, uh, to do the.
This is the board committee? The board committee?
No, um, it was myself, uh, Commissioner Wilkins, um, Anya and Brian Johnson.
Okay, is there any discussion on this topic or anything you wanted to tell us? I know that at the last meeting, we just needed a, um, to further research the procedure.
No, I would just like, uh, permission to, uh. Get with them and I'd like, I'd like it to be in, on negotiated in four phases. First would be the environmental and the historical, to make sure that there's no stumbling blocks, anything that's gonna get in our way to do the project. Um, if that's all right, then we would do, um, uh, the land survey, the right away survey. Construction staking and then the final project at completion.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions? We have a proposed motion. I don't know, we had other questions first.
I don't have any, anybody else? With that, then, um, I'll move to award the Cedar Springs Lane relocation contract to the top rank poser. Anderson Perry contingent upon successful negotiation of the contract. To delegate contract negotiation authority to the Gillum County Roadmaster.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is bus barn. Uh, new business. We have consider approval of a ward of bid for construction of the Gillum County Bus Barn. Um, wow, we're finally here. This is great.
Yeah. I'd like Gillum County Transportation Director.
Make sure you speak up. Thank you.
Good morning to Jeff Schott, who works as a leader. So, I guess we'll tell you where we are, kind of an update on the project. So we received bids, uh, I think January twenty-ninth. We had six bidders on the project, which was remarkable. I haven't seen six bidders on a project like that for twelve or thirteen years, so. Um, and the low bidder was, uh, Kirby Nagelhow Construction Company, and their base bid was, I think, one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there was an additive alternate for nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Which was for two, level two electric vehicle charging stations that the court had requested be added to the project. And since that was kind of outside the scope of the ODOT grant, that would be something that would be picked up directly by Gilliam County. That's why we had it as a separate line item in the bid. Um, so Kirby Nagelhow did the, uh, Connaught Grade School, they've done a number of projects. We issued a RFI that we do satisfy one of the Oregon, uh, public contracting laws, to make sure that they are the lowest responsible bidder. Which they responded to, and so then we sent out a memo that indicated that we recommended award, and then yesterday at, um, the direction of Judge Patote. I sent out a, um, a notice of intent to award, uh, to everybody that had bid the project. And the reason we do that, there's a provision Oregon law that says that there's a seven day waiting period that you have between the time that you have a notice of intent to award. And then you can actually award the bid, right? So, what we're asking for here today is to approve the award of the project contingent on. There not being a, uh, protest to the bid, and, and the reason for that is that for some reason, there was an irregularity in the bid, or one of the bidders thought that. You know, there was some reason why that the bid wasn't valid, then they would come back and, and then we would have some discussion and sort that out, which I've actually never been through. Before, I hope to never be through, so, anyway, I don't think it'll come up. I think we were, everything was above board on the bid, so. I think that, that's gonna be the motion that's in front of you. Um, and then moving on from there, once we get the notice of award. Uh, put out, then we will issue that and Judge Patote will sign that, and we'll send that to the contractor, and then we'll pick up the contract documents. Actually, we're gonna be putting together contract documents this week and next week in the meantime. Um. And, uh, we'll get those out to the contractor, the contractor will sign those, it will come back, Judge Patote will sign those. Counter, countersign the contracts and the project will probably begin. And the date of the, where the time, the clock begins, it begins on the project will probably be March, I think, third. I think it's the first Monday in March is what I anticipate. And then there's gonna be, I can't remember how many days we had on the project, but I'm sure the project will continue through Oc. Probably October, November. Anybody have any questions?
Well, that's great.
Okay, as far as the other things that's going on, we have planning done, septic systems done, um, it's, we've submitted it to building code. Building codes has not given us, uh, building permit yet, which I'm not gonna push you on that until next week. Um, so I think the project is moving ahead. I'm sure we'll be back to talk about it, so, anyway. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I move to award the construction contract for the Gillum County transportation barn. Bus barn to Kirby Nagelhow Construction Company, based on their bid dated January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. In the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred. Including the base bid and additive alternative number one. This award is contingent on there being no protest to the award for seven days following the issuance of a. Notice of intent to award pursuant to Oregon local public contracting rules. Should there be a protest to the notice of intent to award, this award shall be nullified.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Alright, thanks. Long motion. Maybe a run on sentence there.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay. That covers that. Now you're going to, are you going to address the next item?
Yeah.
Childcare.
Yeah.
I'll allow you to go directly into some. Would you consider scope of work change order request for additional services for Condon Early Learning Center for our consultant?
Okay, so update on the early learning. So the early learning center project is out for bid. We had our mandatory walkthrough last week. I think it was on Thursday. We had ten general contractors show up for it, which for reference, we had seven general contractors show up for the bus barn project. So that that was good. I mean, clearly, there's people are looking for work out there, which is very different than what we've seen for the last five or six years here. So I'm asking for a change in scope to my to my contract. And my contract is with the county to do the design phase work on that project. And that goes back to some. I don't remember which program it was, but it was some COVID related money. And they were able to earmark that federal money to pay for the design services on the project. And I think that's also covering MFIAs contract and it covered the geotech and some other some other design professional services for the project. The reason I'm asking for a change on this is my, we're we're into the bid phase of the project, which I have specifically excluded from my contract with the county because at that time, it was going to be turned over to or the it was anticipated to be turned over to Condon Early Learning Center. At that point, that has not happened. And so we're trying to do is get through the bid process because the project is not fully funded at this time. There is anticipation that if we have this real number that we can go forward and that we can get or the people that are going to going after the money have a much better opportunity of getting the funding that they need to complete the project. So that's why I'm asking for a change on this project. Project bids right now, I have a, I think it officially, the the ad in the paper said the nineteenth. I pushed that to the twenty fifth. February, which I think is a Tuesday. It is a Tuesday. And I did that just because it was too tight. We got, we were a little bit late. It integrated out. There's been a number of questions that have come up. We're issuing our first addendum on it tomorrow. So anyway.
So with this, I guess my concern is that movie, but they don't have their full funding out there yet.
Correct.
So we you award a contract to do this. Is that is there a timeframe that they can?
Well, there's, I guess, if you're asking kind of what the next steps are and what will happen with it, like, you know, what are the potential outcomes of it? Well, one potential outcome is they don't do the project. That's one potential outcome. I think another potential outcome is they potentially look at making the project smaller. That's possible to do. There'd be some rework in the design if we did that. So there's a cost associated with that given cost down. I think the learning center is pretty confident that they think that there's additional grant funding out there to fund the project at this point. So what we're trying to do is just get through the bid phase so that we can get them a bid number. Because, you know, I've come up with what my cost opinion is for the project, but those are and I wouldn't say notoriously unreliable, but sometimes they've not, you know, they've they're they're my best guess. They're we their opinions. And so like, for example, the bus barn, you know, my cost opinion was like one point four or five million. It came in at one point three two five. So and for this project, I can't remember what I have, but it's around two point five million dollars for that project. So you know, they're looking at what they can do. And and there is some other people that my understanding have committed funding that they can get a little bit more funding, then they're going to get a bunch more funding for the project. So I think that there's a good a good shot at doing it. And my, from my perspective at this point, I we're going to carry this through the bid phase one way or the other, so that they can get a bid and and try to get the project done. I think it's a good project.
So the ten thousand dollars additional in terms of scope is all that's being requested.
That's correct. Yes.
To get you where you need.
And that's just for my contract. That's not for that's not for any construction or anything like that.
Okay, so my next question is, when will we be expending that money? Because the I'll just let you answer that, then I'll tell you why I asked. When when will we get that bill?
Probably March.
Okay, because there's a deadline to spend that COVID.
Right.
Because we didn't further obligate. We had to, we had to obligate the COVID money as as unspent by December thirty first. We have other uses for it, the general fund, that unspent dollars, but I just wanted to make sure that
Right.
we can get if if we go with this, that we will still utilize the COVID dollars and that it would only be the ten thousand.
Yeah, that that's that's my intent. Yeah, that that would be, that would get us through the, you know, probably that would be the, I'm guessing my last invoice for that would be the end of March.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I also just, you know, I think we should track this because we've helped one entity on one end of the county and we should track these expenses. Yes, they were COVID dollars. They were Gillum County dollars. They were public funds. And we just need to be cognizant that there may be other people coming forward that we're fair and are nothing to you, nothing with you. I'm just generally a statement about that for future, for future reference.
But this is out of the code.
Yeah, it would it would qualify because these pillar has already been approved. There's a process with these COVID funds that I believe it's your tax ID number has to be approved and you have to qualify. They're already in the in the loop for that. So as long as that we get the bill before May first, it would qualify.
So with their, we don't have a page with.
No.
So it would just be, I move to approve the scope change request from Miller Consulting on the Condon Early Learning Center in the amount of ten thousand dollars increase.
Yes. There's a second.
Do we state with any of that or not?
Um, you can.
I just thought that might help.
It would be horrible times. Yeah. Will be expended from the COVID.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Where will we have that?
Oh, okay. I was glad you asked. So the event center is the next one coming up. So we anticipate that's going to go out around the end of the month. We've been working on we're working on the really the structural piece of that. And then the other piece that we're talking about or that we've been working on has to do it's and there there were some changes on this too, but the Chris is going out, Chris Fitzsimmons, the sheriff department is going out for some money for generator to make this part of a I'm not sure what it is, some some FEMA grant. And we're making some changes. You know, part of the scope of the project for the event centers, it's not just the event center, but there's a bunch of utilities and stuff around it to kind of make everything work. And one of them is to make sure that we set this thing up so that we have, so we can put a generator in easily that powers everything that we want to power it. And also in mind that there's some thought that in the future, they may want to replace that office area there. So we're working on that. And we've worked with Clemmy Avasa into, we've kind of come up with a plan about how they're going to redo some of their primary transmission stuff up there to make this project and the bus barn work better, improve some of their infrastructure as well. So that's what we're focusing on right now.
Because I think as part of that grant is also the air conditioning in the
That's correct.
Buildings.
So that grant that Chris is going after, I think Chris and Corey Michael are going after. So what it would do is as I understand it, I haven't actually reviewed it, but there'd be a generator that would power the event center, the exhibit halls and the new the office or the new office. And at this point, it might be the office too, because we're going to have to run an extra conduit over there to pick that up. And then there would be air conditioning in the exhibit hall. And then we would also insulate the ceiling of the exhibit hall to make the air conditioning work better. And then it might provide some heat, although if it got real cold, those heaters wouldn't work real well. But if it's like down to twenty degrees, it would also provide some heat in those areas. So if there was a disaster, that would be an area. And this was some money, I think, that, you know, has come up. I don't think, know if there's a direct relationship with the fire that we had last year because that was that was used for a center there.
Yeah, because they had to bring the big air conditioners from the barns down.
Right, right. So we're trying to put some extra, extra power capacity in for that as well. Okay.
Yeah.
You have questions?
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
What will you do when you get off these projects then?
I've got some other stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is seven point three, consider appointment of cultural trust coalition members. This changed just this morning. And thanks to our trusty assistant, Anya, she quickly did a whole bunch of work this morning to get us ready for this meeting. So this was one of the things. So we received a late, I shouldn't say it was late, it just wasn't received by the time we did the agenda, the person who is interested in the cultural coalition. And that was Rochelle Bennett. She was the the third person. So we need two members. Leave it up to you to make a motion. We have letters of interest from Jody Gentry. Donna below, excuse me, Rhonda below and Rochelle Bennett.
So if I just ask, is there commitment on how many members they can have on the coalition? Or is it not a window like five to seven or six? Six, so you can only have said, I don't know if that's what they do about that. They ask the, that's what's written in the forums. Because I'm just, the only reason I'm saying that is because the cultural trust coalition has been kind of a revolving door. And I think they've had times when they gather, they had anybody and then they had then they're full.
Right.
I I have a hard time turning somebody away that.
Right. Potentially agree. I thought about this too, and I thought we have a whole bunch of other committees too. We could say as an alternative to, you know, we need you. It's just that we can always point to that. If there is a way to point out, yeah, I don't know if that's a good one. Okay. Our next meeting is not, it's just two weeks away. We're late. Okay, we'll just look into it and wait and then find out. I'm I'm happy if people were interested.
I know. Yeah, there's been few times when.
Yeah, it's it's a hard.
Miranda was always like, I'm still looking.
Yeah.
Still looking.
It's very difficult. A lot of counties or a lot of entities, it's done different ways. Some is run through the county, some is an independent nonprofit that that manages the cultural coalition. So I don't know the history about why Gillum County has done it. Maybe there wasn't someone who was going to do this. But there's a lot of money that's available for small cultural projects. And I think that's why we want to keep it going in some way. It may change into a different entity at some point in time. We can't keep this up. We're also utilizing county staff to do this. And that's the other, that's the other thing that when bandwidth becomes short, it becomes one of those things that we would maybe find another way. So right, we'll just table that then until next meeting. Consider appointment of county representative to the Lower John Day Area Council on Transportation.
Hey, that's that's me.
Okay, so this is what's brought to our attention. Did you want to just give the background, Anya, on it?
I I just found out we need to remember because it's currently fashion is appointed because the with the ultimate duty. And so obviously, we need to replace that position.
Okay. I recommend the, oh, any other discussion? I recommend the county court appoint Commissioner Leah Watkins to the Lower John Day Council on Transportation through December thirty first, two thousand twenty six. And that is my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Last item on the agenda. Seven point five, discussion regarding right of way application for Crydulio Devco seventeen LLC. Okay, I'm going to start by making a statement. This has been going on for a few months. This this project discussion. And as time has gone on, I've learned more about it. And how it interconnects with my own personal business. So I must declare an actual conflict of interest in this case. Because Odyssey Wind has reached out to my husband and I about offering us a land lease for the project that directly would would have impact with this right of way application. And my husband and I also leased land that these proposed towers would be upon. So the right thing for me to do is to step away. This is why we have three county commissioners and for me not to comment or vote on this matter. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Wilkins, who is the road department commissioner, so that he can take it from here.
Yeah, I I still have a lot of questions and concerns. And do we know who's on the, I'm not sure who's all on, but
Kurt Bell and Alvin.
Okay, I just. I mean, this is meant, you know, I've asked previously to to make sure that maybe affected landowners were going to have been contacted and affected. I've also asked if there was a current project permitted because I guess I feel like we were presented this and we're just supposed to give this to them. And I think there's a lot of things that we need to consider and take a look at. And I just think we have a lot more to information to find out, to make the decision on this. I know they are wanting this. But I'm I'm not ready to move forward and make a decision on this. I think we still have a lot of questions. I want to make sure the landowners that are going to be affected where this project is want to make sure we have a good communication out there. And I think we need that to make a decision. So.
Commissioner Wilkins, would you like us to be heard at this point or do you not want?
Absolutely. I'm I'm, yeah, I have any communication. I've had read your email and but yeah. I'm I'm, I think we need to get any and communication, anybody wants out there and concerns. Yeah.
Well, I would think if I'm, and I'm not supposed to listen to what you have to say, that I think it would be a good idea to be able to invite the landowners and the wind company that's potentially doing this project in the same meeting so that maybe they get answered questions we're not you know, prepared to answer. I read your letter, but I know, I think Sean is, he's on the, I think he was traveling.
They're all watching.
So.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Sean.
Yep, I'm here. Go ahead.
Is that something that would work for you guys to have a have it on the agenda on a meeting when landowners can ask questions, that you guys can answer them? I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I think that
Yeah, I think that, uh, we'll have, we'll discuss this internally. Um, first of all, we received a letter this morning from, uh, Commissioner Wilkins. And so we've, we're in the process of digesting that right now and kind of evaluating how we can engage with our, uh, internal civil engineering group and electrical group. So we'll, um, we'll have a more formal response to that letter here, uh, shortly. I don't know exactly when, but shortly. And secondly, um, I don't think that it would be a problem to maybe do a work session with property owners and, and us and, uh, other interested parties. But I'll defer to Annabelle on that.
Coming to, uh, from Colorado, cause I couldn't make it there this week. Sorry, um, can you hear me?
You're here.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Can you speak on it loud?
How about now? Anya, can you hear me now?
Oh, there we go.
That's better, Anno, yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, I would echo what Sean said that we're happy to do a work session. Um, I would, I would point out that I think, you know, the point of what we were pursuing here with the county road right of way is to stay exclusively within the county road right of way. So we are happy to, um, talk with landowners about concerns and of course go through all that process. And also, um, we know that the landowners bordering the county road have already signed exclusive leases with another developer. So that was our reasoning for pursuing the county road right of way. Um, and we would plan to stay exclusively within it. So, um, I know that there are view shed impacts and like what you see driving down the road looks different. So, um, we're happy to talk about that. Um, but, you know, for the the court, you can tell us what we need to do to continue through the process, but, um, and we just got your letter today, Commissioner Wilkins. So, um, we'll, like Sean said, um, work through the different points and information that you wanted. Um, and yeah, there was something else. Um, we are also working with EDPR. Um, we're talking with them still, um, about an agreement to work together and we're gonna meet with them here soon. Um, so I just want you to know that, um, from our perspective, we are, um, collaborating with them and also in talks with Brookfield about how we can all work together. Um, the one issue to be aware of with, um, some of the points in your letter, Commissioner Wilkins, is that by requesting exact locations of where poles will be, that would require significant design that costs a ton of money and time. And we have been signing leases with landowners, but that, um, I just have a little bit of initial concern on that requirement before granting the permit. Um, because we, we need to figure out if we have the permit before we can spend a ton of money in engineering to figure that out. Um, so I guess is, one question I have coming out of it is, is your letter a condition of approval or just a request of information? Cause that would help me.
No, I think we, we stated that is, we're just requesting information to, um, you know, and this does impact landowners. And you said that, uh, I, I guess, like I say, it just seemed like this is kind of went about backwards. I go, I would have thought that getting the group together, the people would have been first. Um, but we have some affected parties and I guess I'm confused. You said you have some sign agreements, but I'm not sure, uh, you know, as a commissioner, I, I, you know, like I say, new commissioner, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we're involving people that could possibly impact, be impacted by this. And with way this started out, I don't believe that has happened.
I mean, I'd like to clarify that the process is that you submit an application and so that's what we did because it's between the county and us. Um, at the same time, the, to be clear, the leases that we've signed with landowners are for parcels within our project area for wind leases. This is something different. So, um, I'm sorry if, uh, it seems like we came in late, but from our perspective, we researched how the process went and followed it as best we could. Um, coming to you before we submitted, we spoke with Dewey, the roadmaster and, um, yeah, I didn't, we didn't mean to, you know, sneak by or anything. Just wanna make that clear.
Well, like I say, I think, uh, you know, uh, the information is, um, more information is needed. And, and I can understand where you're coming from with, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's asking, well, where's the pole exactly? But we, we need to have that communicated. Because there is potentially impact to the landowners. And I just wanna make sure that that is being addressed and everybody's on the same page. And, uh, for us to, uh, educate ourselves on making a decision on this.
Of course, you got it. Sean, do you have anything to add?
No, just to reiterate what Annabelle said, that we're happy to, you know, we're, we're, we're in this to be uh, transparent and we wanna work with property owners in the county to make sure that we're, we're putting our best foot forward and being good neighbors. So um, that kind of goes without saying as far as the way that Cordelia and, and Nautas develop. Um, and, and secondly, um, Commissioner Wilkins, to your point about this being backwards, um, we were, you know, I, I realize that the county, this is probably the first, um, application of this nature that the county's seen. Uh, so I understand that. But, um, I do think that just in filing the application, it, it is the impetus to start the conversation. And we're happy to provide additional information to the best of our ability. Um, and to kind of elaborate on what Annabelle said earlier, this is, you know, we're very early stage in this process. And so our design criteria hasn't been identified yet. So we don't know exactly where turbines are gonna be located. We don't have layouts for that. Uh, we don't know the, the size of the project. So we don't know exactly what the structures are gonna look like in the, you know, in the, uh, transmission corridor. Um, however, we can, I'm certain that we can provide some preliminary engineering and potential locations. Um, but I think that's gonna require us working hand in hand with, uh, with the roadmaster and with the county. And with other, you know, um, stakeholders.
Right. I understand that, Sean. And you, you're just, you're in the ba, you know, preliminary stage. I get that. You're, you currently, you don't have any permitted projects though. You're just, you're working on them and, and I think everybody wants to see growth that can happen. But, uh, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that, uh, all parties that are affected are involved and have input.
Agreed. And maybe when we do, uh, Commissioner, is that, uh, maybe you or, or the other, uh, others on the court, we get together and decide, you know, um, let's just have a work session and how, what that looks like and, and who's invited. And we can try and answer everybody's questions.
Right. Cause you're working on options too. And I would assume that options for your projects, options for your, how you're gonna get your transmission. I mean, yeah, I, I think that's, we just wanna make sure everything's weighed and communicated and then see where everybody's at.
And, and, and also, uh, this is, so this piece of the project is part of a much larger, uh, permit application that will be filed, uh, with, uh, with FSAC. So this, you know, we're, we're early in that process too, but, um, just to make crystal clear, we will obtain all necessary permits from all the, the jurisdictional bodies that is required for a project of this nature. And so this would only, this, this piece, it would be a, a part of that much larger permit package.
That's all I have right now. Anybody, I mean, somebody else wanna speak?
I, I stated, I stated in my email to you all what my primary issues are. I have all my friends to speak to it.
Yeah, I know where they can hear. I don't know, Sean and Annabelle can hear you.
And, um, just as a point of information, when you're back here, it's really hard to hear this person.
Oh, the one facing us.
Yes. I mean, especially if it's Brooke who talks kind of, but I missed everything she said.
To turn around and watch the video.
Right, that's what I should have had it up on my phone and watching it, right?
Yeah.
Um, so Marta Michaelow, six nine six nine eight Barnett Road, Arlington. Um, I guess my biggest concern is uh, those telescoping towers, sixty foot easement Barnett is Barnett Road is extremely curvy, or they're wanting to put it between, uh, Leida's and Cedar Springs. I learned something new, uh, today, which I didn't, I had no idea is that the wa, the actual wires on the towers have to be inside the easement. So what that means is more poles. So like the big curve that's in front of Davis's house, I mean, that's a big old curve. That's ninety degrees at least. And how many poles would it take to go around that one curve to keep the wires within the easement? Um, if anywhere you go, all the way up, all the way up Barnett, it's extremely curvy. So anytime there's a turn, they're gonna have to put another pole in to, so it's just gonna be a mass of huge metal telescoping poles. They're like two hundred and fifty feet tall. And, um, I just have a hard time even imagining it when there's while the easiest way to go is to, you know, do it in a straight line. And, but in order for them to do it in a straight line, they have to work with the landowners and the leaseholder um, in order to make that happen. Now, certainly it must be doable. Um, and, um, I know that haven't really reached out. I'm not an adjacent landowner. I live adjacent, but I'm not a landowner adjacent to it. But, um, there's there's a lot of research that has to be done and putting poles up in that little, I mean, we get flash floods, that whole canyon Barnett Road runs. What happens? Where do the poles go? Do they withstand flash floods? What kind of foot has to go underneath them? That's gonna be blasted. It's, it's, uh, bedrock most of the way up through there. Um, where does it go? And can it withstand flash floods? Can it withstand anything? So just is concerning. I think the landowners, I think part of the cost of doing business, uh, for, for Cordelia is to pay the landowners for the, uh, easement across their property. To me, that's the cost of doing business for a for-profit company, which they clearly are. So. Um, but, and I'm with you. I think, I want everybody to be successful. Let's figure out how to make it work. Let's figure out how to make it work so that everybody is, um, happy and that it, uh, there, they get what they deserve and the power gets moved and they work in the county. We want them to be here. So that's really, that's all I have to say. So, and you do have my letter. I'll give you a copy, Mike. So I, it's on the, it is on the, uh, website. So.
It's in correspondence.
Yeah, it's in correspondence. Yeah. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
So I'm Michael Ramsey. Um, my residence is outside of the county. I live in Baker City. But I am the manager of Ramsey Ranch and Company LLC. I just feel that for multiple reasons that Mars already established that there has gotta be a better access down through there than to follow that county road just because the a financial. I mean, basically they're want, you're wanting to an easement for nothing. Um, I feel that the county should be held responsible when it comes to this easement. Now, everything that, if you turn over the easement, that means you're responsible for the easement. That means when they're in there doing construction, you are responsible for them maintaining and doing what they're supposed to, staying with inside the easement. Also then we have erosion issues. Is the county gonna be responsible for maintaining, making sure that's been done? You're gonna have issues with weeds. Somebody's gonna have to control the weeds now. Um, and you've created old, to me, like say, a bad location for it. If you go south of Ramsey Ranch and LLC, the road is fairly straight. It's not that big of an issue south. Going north down to Cedar Springs Lane, like I said, it's a very windy, turning road. And you've got a lot of obstacles. And if you put in all these poles, it's gonna affect the landowners. There was already mentioned, just one person said, well, you're already allowed, uh, fiber optics in there. I'm like, well, fiber optics are all on the ground. They're buried. They're not blocking our view. They're not blocking doing any work on the property. I just feel that there is a lot better location. And I've mentioned this to multiple people, that the old U P railroad would be a straight line and would not affect property owners or the county road department by using that. Um, I have not seen any input from Sean about trying to see if that is justifiable. It's just been straightforward with the county. So I think there's a lot of things that you have to take in consideration. And you're gonna have to, you're, the county yourself are gonna be the one that's gonna be held responsible for everything. So at that point, the county needs to have its own committee to figure out how all these little incidents are gonna occur and who takes care of them. As for the legal part of it, has the county got any rig, legal advice about this? And what does it pertain to that the landowners would like to know?
Yeah, I all I know is the, our legal counsel has looked at the, the contract that was proposed. But, yeah, I don't have a good answer for us, like you say, affecting the landlords. It's, like I say, I, I still think there's a lot of things trying to find out on this and to make sure. So. Yeah, I'd, I'd say we're, we're still back, honey.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wanting to see how the process is gonna go. Some landowners did not have any notice of this at all till just the other day. Um, some of the landowners are, are under the lease, the lease with them. There's only two or three, I think, that's gonna be crossing through properties that they don't have a lease with already or some. So we just wanna be a part of it and see if everything is legally it can be done and financially. And does it justify where it needs to be? I feel it doesn't. I think there's better options on the table. And like Marta said, you know, you have companies. And like Martha said, you know, you have companies that are coming in here and trying to make money. But they shouldn't be, I, I just honestly feel that they shouldn't take advantage of the county. So now that easement, if you, if you allow that easement for them to take that, now you're blocking out an easement that they've consumed, that may need to be used by somebody in the county for Columbia Basin, stuff like that.
I appreciate your concerns and, and those are good points. So I guess, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Watkins, but like I said, I look forward to communicate more with them on this and I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen. I think we're, we're, I feel I'm a ways away from being able to make a good decision here. So new commissioner, I just want to make sure we're taking all the information in that we need to and everybody's input is effective going forward.
Okay. So we're just going to proceed forward with, try to get some kind of a
Yeah, I like the idea of a work session and getting people involved and I, I, I think, you know, uh, yeah, I, I, I don't think there was a I guess lack of a communication, the communication maybe didn't happen. That's kind of how I feel. Uh, I understand they're trying to work for a process and there are options, but like I say, we got to find out some more information to make sure.
I think they, they were at a couple of different meetings and I think, I mean, I think it's not a matter of communications. It was a matter of, you know, not knowing the questions to ask.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe, yeah.
So, so I, that's my personal opinion is they, they've been at several meetings. So I think it was unfortunate that they didn't get out to the other landowners that were, so. I see no harm in having a discussion and, and posing your questions and helping them be able to answer them.
Well, just like their project development, I mean, it's like, I, I think you need to look at all options and weigh everything and take everything into consideration. So I, I think that's the one I want to make sure happens. So.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else this time.
I, I have some addition, if, if, if there's an opportunity for additional comment, I'd, I'd like to speak. This is Kimberly Davis with the forty ranch. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this afternoon. Uh, my brother J R Davis is also logged into the meeting today. He and I, along with our brother Phil, own the property at one five three two three Cedar Springs Lane. J R is dialed in at this meeting. He's, he's a resident of the county and he's at the house now. We have a couple of points to share and expound on the email that we sent, um, that, and that is attached to the agenda. The right of way for the proposed monopoles runs through our property. Um, it is, our property is located on both sides of Cedar Springs Lane. On the map that Sean provided to the court, we are, we are the one landowner on Cedar Springs Lane. From Rock Creek where Barnett Road ends and where Cedar Springs begins to where the project line concludes for the monopoles. On not that stretch, for that matter, on all of Cedar Springs, there currently are no power poles or overhead lines of any kind. I think it's also worth noting that, um, monopoles can be as tall as two hundred and fifty feet. The right of way is only sixty feet. And the front door of our ranch house is less than eighty feet from the road. The forty ranch is supportive of renewable energy projects in the area and Gillum County as a whole. However, as has been expressed by others, we have concerns and a lot of questions about the proposed use of the right of way by a private company without landowner involvement, especially given the proximity to our front door. We have not received any details from Cordelia regarding the right of use, the use of the right of way. As the energy development project is in its infancy, as Commissioner Wilkins has noted, more time will allow all of us to more seriously consider the effects that granting the use of right of way will have. Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Check with your gymnast?
You have somebody else on there? Yeah. So I guess we'll just continue to get input and move see what we can come about.
There's, uh, it's important to note too, that there is a FAA approved airport on Cedar Springs. Okay. Have we concluded that topic? Uh, announcements and next meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner Watkins.
I attended the CAPCO meeting at the end of, uh, January. Sure have done those things, but didn't write anything down this meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkins?
Yeah, I think, you know, I thought we had a really good town hall. And, uh, one's coming up next week, right? Eleventh in Arlington. Their Creole meeting, October, Scott October, February, excuse me, Valentine's Day. Valentine's Day is not in October, sorry. And that's, I think there's some meeting in Primeville. I'll be online. But then that's all I have on the agenda before our next meeting, I believe on the nineteenth.
Right.
And the only thing is, I believe the next Northwood meeting is going to be on the twentieth. And I'll be in Salem. So.
Oh, right.
County College. So.
Commissioner.
Pretty sure. I, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that date, but I think it's the twentieth, Thursday.
Yeah.
And that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay. All right. Uh, yeah, we had a really good town hall meeting on, uh, Tuesday, February eleventh, excuse me, unconvened. The next town hall is Tuesday, February eleventh at the Gronkus Building in Arlington. So it'll be interesting to see how they're similar, different. We're going to run them the same way with everyone's consulting for Michael facilitating. Um, and I just know that being members of the Conning community, the Arlington community, although they're only forty miles apart, they sometimes seem to world apart in their needs. So I'm looking forward to it. Legislative session is in full swing. I've been participating in the Eastern Oregon caucus calls and Eastern Oregon Association of County calls. I believe you may, Commissioner Wilkins, be the designate for the Eastern Oregon Association of County Calls, but I've been attending them because you were still working. So you and I can talk about it. I think Commissioner Watkins appeared to, or attended too. So between the three of us until you can get on those calls, they're more frequent right now because of the session. So it's really, the Eastern Oregon caucus calls are wonderful because, um, Eastern Oregon County courts are talking about their particular issues such as fire mapping, um, legislation to, um, assist us with that. Regarding insurance effects, keeping abreast of that to make sure legislation is going to be in line, not to be harmful for our local people. Also, there's, I supported fair funding, uh, fair funding legislation. I just, I probably need to talk with you to, in a public meeting like this, about how are we going to jointly support legislation? If one person is on a call and, and because legislative session needs immediate action when a bill's going to be heard, that we're on board with that support. So, um, I need to navigate.
Cause they're going to actually give us the funding they should be giving us in the first place.
Well, on the fair funding?
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that's going to, if it happens, and it seems like there's good momentum behind it, is that Union County Fairgrounds has no water or sewer, and I never knew that at McGrann. And it's these, these fair grounds have been used as staging areas for the fires and it's brought light to issues like this. So that can help the fair and it may help all of the fairs.
See, I sat two years ago at AOC, I sat through the Oregon Fairs session and if you look at what we were supposed to be receiving from lottery dollars, we were supposed to be receiving around, around two hundred and fifty dollar dollars a year, which we are receiving fifty three. So the amount that they promised fares that they were going to send them is not what they are sending them. And I think I don't know, I haven't read the legislation, but I think they're trying to make them go back and hold their feet to the fire and actually send the fares what they were supposed to be sending them in the first place. Yeah.
Gillum County has received with the assistance of onion coordinating, uh, live guidance on the release of the covenant on the, the Grand Lab Building so that we can, it's coming up this early summer, um, that we will be pretty clear from that. We will be the legal guidance to be sure we could do whatever we want with it. And also we have a draft agreement with our new mills for renewal of that lease. So. Tending a frontier telnet meeting this, uh, coming Thursday. We have a meeting set up. It's going to be kind of exciting to see where it goes between public health, municipal district, prevention coordinator to talk about starting up a summer program for kids so that we have a summer program. It's part of the bigger childcare issue, but I don't know how to tackle the bigger childcare issue unless we break it up in chunks and try to take care of parts of it that are imminent and summer care is imminent. So was done two years ago, was successful with people coming together to make it happen. And we're going to try to reinvent that idea. We have budget committee meeting just in, just among us in the building, talked about that when Brooklyn was speaking with us and to get going on that process. What a compensation committee meeting, um, which the next meeting will be March seventeenth. And if either of you are interested in approaching the compensation committee, you will have that opportunity. I think the way we can do that without creating a forum situation, just leave the room while you're addressing the compensation committee. If you have anything you want to talk to them about. County College, February twentieth through the twenty second. There will not be a county college in March, but April, May and June there will. So we're, we're running a marathon right now and, and, um, it's, there's a lot going on. Um, we're doing a speed pre-qualification webinar in February, excuse me, February tenth and eighteenth, and that's for a fiber project. So we're, um, gearing up to submit the, the grant application. A network waste management to begin talks about a new post fee agreement and road use agreement and, um, the talks for the condition use permit have begun. Those will both expire simultaneously on December thirty first. So we are inactive talks on that right now. Meeting went very well. Coming to you in the next month to six weeks will be a proposed SIP agreement with a public hearing on the Leaning Journey for Two B Wind Tower Project, um, by Almond Green. And, um, so that'll be an interesting process to go through that for the first time. And we're ready. I think we're prepared. And we have a new DA. His name is Ryan. Rodney, Rodney Gario? I don't know how to say it. Brian has been appointed by the governor's office and we have a permanent DA. So.
So that takes, that one was justice?
Yeah, and he was temporary.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, anything else? We're good in the order? Anything else? Okay. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.